I don't know what he's doing. And Ari is supposed to, but I haven't seen Ari. So we've got four, four members. So it's good. All right.
And there's, there's one guest trying to come in now. So I'm gonna let them in. Okay.
Hello.
Hi Paul.
Hello guys. How are you?
Paul Biker, timely signs.
All right, good. Okay, why don't you start recording?
Okay, recording has started.
All right. This meeting of the City of Kingston zoning board of appeals will now come to water. It is six o'clock PM. My name is Tony Arklevich and I will be chairing this proceeding. I will take a moment to explain how the zoning board of appeals functions. The board is comprised of five members and two alternates. We have been appointed to serve the citizens of the city of Kingston. We perform this service to the best of our abilities on a voluntary unpaid basis. The other board members present are Brian Cafferty, new member Donna Martin, welcome to the zoning board.
You.
Mary Newbauer. And and me. So that's four members. Ari is supposed to be here and Joe is supposed to be calling in. So I don't know what's going, but we've got four members. This will be a virtual meeting. Okay. Okay, this, this is new technology. We'll be using a virtual meeting. Eric Kitchen, zoning enforcement officer will be at the controls. There will be a period for public comment this evening after each variance request has been presented. This period is an opportunity for individuals to make a statement of opinion, not to engage in debate. You will be instructed as to how to access this opportunity by Eric. Each, each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Speakers must be brief and to the point to allow everyone a chance to speak. Speakers must address the board as a whole, not individual members and not other speakers or audience members. Professional demeanor is expected. Okay, first order of business, approve the December 10th, 2020 minutes. So I have a motion. Motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Who was, who moved?
Joe. Joe Fitzgerald just joined us.
All right, Joe. I knew you were able to do it. All right.
How you doing?
He lets his presence be known right away. So move. Moved by Joe Fitzgerald, second by Mary Newbauer. All in favor, aye.
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 Close. Carrie's, we've got five members right now. So Carrie's five zero. All right. Moving along, we're gonna try to get this expeditiously done tonight. We're still giving everybody a chance to present. We've got first on the new business. Is Ajay Barley here?
I, I don't believe he's, he's with us tonight.
I hope it's not anything serious.
No, I, I think he's busy.
Okay, that sounded a little ominous. Now, I hate, I hate to start this meeting off with a technicality. But the phone's appearing Eric. Who's that? Eric?
Yeah, uh, hold on.
Keeps, the phone keeps appearing on, on there with a number, Joe's number.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's probably true. Yes, yes.
Now, I hate, I hate to start this meeting with a technicality, but technically, there should be a letter from the applicant to the representative talking to the board. I don't imagine.
There is a letter.
Yes, there is a letter.
Letter? Okay, it's in the packet?
Yes.
Okay, good. I failed to see that. Thank you. Right on top of it. So Paul, how do you spell your last name?
B as in boy. E I C H E R T.
Okay, and your timely signs?
Timely signs of Kingston, Inc.
All right, now, I'm going to summarize this request and then I'll give you an opportunity if I fail to mention anything pertinent that you would like. This building is the Shirt Factory Building on Cornell Street and it's a building for artists and various types of artists, whether it's a painting sculptor or dance. And you are proposing to put a sign up on the side of the building facing the parking lot and the code allows for 200 square feet maximum overall, overall length of the wall, one wall. 100 square footage double, 200 square feet. You're requesting a sign to fill in a recessed area on the side of the building. So it fits within that recessed area of 512 square feet. So you're asking for an additional 312 square feet variance.
That's correct.
And everything that I presented and in your package, you've mocked up a rendering of what the sign would look like on the side of the building.
Tony, Tony, do you want to pick, 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 pick it up and show it?
Well, everybody has it in the packet.
Yep.
Do you want me to screen share this?
No, I don't want to do anything too fancy. This is our first.
Okay.
Don't want to lose the whole thing. So I don't know if you can see it, but it's in the package. It's the sign. So we're looking for a variance of 312 square feet. And as I said, it fits within the recess.
Is anyone else's connection lousy? My connection's terrible.
Who is this? Who's talking?
It's Ari.
Ari, welcome.
It's very choppy. Is everyone, is anyone else having connection issues here?
I'm not. No.
Good.
Yeah.
Did you pay your cable bill, Ari?
Well, I I take the fifth.
All right, so Ari is, Ari, you're, we have five members here. So you're just in an alternate non-voting role tonight, but you certainly can comment on anything. Okay, we have a new member Donna, we have a new member Donna Martin and Joe has joined us. So we've got Joe, Brian, Donna, Mary and me. So we've got our five and you're an alternate, but you can comment. All right?
Okay.
As always. So Paul, have I pretty much explained the concept? It's on the parking lot side. It's gonna fill in a recess of about 512 square feet. And it's gonna be a simple sign. It's gonna say the Shirt Factory. Am I correct on everything?
Yeah, I, from a technical aspect, we've got the numbers right. You've gone over that. That is the variance we're asking for. You know, there, there seems to be a recess on the building and you know, rather than try to put a smaller sign within that, we just wanted to, to make a really bold statement, kind of in the spirit of some of the older factories in Kingston, some of those. You can see the ghosting of a lot of those older advertising billboards of the past. This really isn't particularly advertising a product or service. It's, you know, more of a the contemporary brand that our client Hagai has developed with Katie Dwyer in Kingston, who did the branding for this. In an attempt to kind of make a consistent approach for all, for all three factories that they, that he has purchased and kind of clean those up, come up with a unified look. And this particular one is the largest and really called for something bold and strong.
Is it the material wood?
Oh, no, no, no. This is, we're going with a traditional approach, painted directly on the brick. Yeah, using traditional techniques that a, you know, an old school billboard painter would have used. Hand painted lettering. The brick will be distressed a little bit, not the brick itself, but the painting, the background painting of the white will have some show through the brick to kind of simulate something that has been in place for, you know, a number of years, something that looks original to the factory with the juxtaposition of the really contemporary typography and a strong black border which fits with the, the new brand of it. So it's kind of a mix of the old and the new. Done in a very traditional style of painting on brick, which has served, you know, the, the industrial, older industrial buildings have that.
Lot of remnants in Kingston.
Many, many.
Although murals are starting to cover them up, but that's a different story. But
True.
Does, does any of the board members, do any of the board members have a question for Paul regarding the sign? The variance needed, anything of that nature?
Um, I do.
Go ahead, Brian.
I, 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 I first of all, I want to acknowledge, I see what you, you want to do. And, and there are several examples throughout the city of of, you know, these ghosted images. You see them on the sides of the furniture store. You see them uptown. You know, they're, they're all over the place. And I guess if they had kept them, you know, if those businesses were still there and they kept them up, they'd be fine. I guess my, my concern is, is that as much as I like the concept, it's, you know, setting a precedent of providing this variance. You know, there are lots of other buildings in town. You know, that have sides of their building, you know, available, you know, for these types of signage and murals. And it's just, you know, that's my only concern here. I think that what you want to do on this specific building seems appropriate and, you know, would be you know, would be consistent with, you know, some of the old signage and graph, graph, graphology at the time. But I guess my concern is, is, is that it's such a large departure from the current code. And
Additional 300, the additional 312 square feet.
Yeah, that's like, it's more than twice the size.
And that is a consideration in an area variance, one of the legal considerations. Whether the requested area variance is substantial. That's one of the considerations legally we are supposed to consider in granting an area variance. And I think that's a, that's a point well taken. I, I think my own opinion on that is that I understand what you're saying. I have concerns on these murals and some of the paintings of signs, et cetera. When the, when they start fading, they're not kept up. You know, what happens in about five years when some of these murals start fading and nobody does anything with them? I will say that it is tempered by the fact that it's the side facing the, the parking lot, which mitigates it somewhat, I think. In terms of some of the things that you're saying, but it's a good point. Does anybody else, anyone out, Brian, do you have anything else or?
Um, you know, it's just, I guess that's just my main, my main concern. I mean, if I, if I didn't, you know, if I wasn't thinking about what the code is and the precedent that would be set by it and, and you know, I would just say as a, looking at this less as a sign and more almost of, of an art project, you know? And, you know, something, and, and I like the notion that I, when I first saw the sign on the building in the rendering and the picture, I thought it was maybe an older shot. And I was gonna ask, you know, was there a sign there before and did it completely erode off the side of the building? And I didn't realize that, that you were actually showing the distressed nature of the sign plan. So good, good job there because it looked like, it looked like it might have been a period shot of the building.
Well, that's, I'll take that as a compliment. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would, I would say, you know, this to me makes a lot of sense. I guess my main concern is, is do we want people who own buildings, you know, all over the city that would benefit from a nice gigantic sign, a nice big sign like this? You know, they start asking for variances to put them on their building.
Well, we, you know, I mean, you're a long time board member. You know that we take each case individually, but one, once somebody does it, I, I think you're right. It can be done, but we do take each case distinctly and separately when we consider the variances. But your point about the substantial is well taken. So. Does
But it, but it, you know, I mean, again, you know, it works. I, I, I don't on its face, I don't have a problem with the way it's going to look. I just have a concern about where, where we, you know, the slippery slope we get on by starting, setting a precedent. But that's just, I guess it was as not as much as a question as it was a concern.
Okay, well, all right. Well taken, point taken. Board members, anyone else have a question for Paul before we vote on this?
I do. Have you thought of, did you actually look at anything smaller?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And did you have any shots of that or what happened? I mean?
We, we do have, we did develop some alternate designs that we can certainly present.
Because I'm thinking along the lines of Brian and I like it. Don't get me wrong. It's beautiful. It really looks as though it was something that was there to begin when the building was built. But I agree with Brian as far as the size and the precedence that we would be setting.
You know, with the size, I think it's hard to see here, but if you look at the building now without the sign, there's a recess in there. So it's almost like a natural place to put the sign to fill that recess. So I'm, I'm wondering.
Also, the scale of the building and the scale of the sign makes sense.
Yeah.
Get that they, it probably doesn't look good. It looked good as a much smaller sign, just simply because the scale is then, you know, by the
Yeah.
scale of the building. And the recess doesn't help in that it, it's providing yet another, you know, another dimension that the eye is gonna go to. So I get the whole reason for wanting to fill that space and be bold with it because I just think design wise, it looks better. But yeah.
All right, any, anyone else comment?
Yes, may I? I just want to address that. First of all, I love the design and I like the idea that that sign is actually recessed into the building because it's a natural fit. But what Brian is saying as a precedent for other buildings, when you think about other historic buildings uptown, not all of them have those recesses. A lot of them are just painted up on the side and, you know, naturally you would have to take into effect case by case, is it worth doing it? Because you have a lot more building structures around those other historic buildings at uptown, midtown area. You know, it's not facing a parking lot. You know, a lot of them are facing, you know, other businesses and residential buildings. So this, I don't see this as a, as an issue going forward for other, other buildings.
You said you do see it as an issue?
No, I don't.
Okay, no, okay. I don't, I don't see it as, as an issue, be only because, as I said, we, we vote on is, particular variances that are before us and we consider all the criteria. And I think we like to be consistent, but not necessarily following precedents as such. We like to be consistent. So I mean, to me, it doesn't bother me, quite frankly, because of the recess. It looks like it's a natural fit in there. And I, I see buildings all over Kingston that have the faded remnants of signage. But who else we have? Thank you, Donna. Joe, do you have anything? Or Ari, do you have anything to add to this before we vote?
No, I think it, I have no objections to the sound.
Okay. Joe, how you doing there? You still with us? That's what I was afraid of. Joe. We lost Joe.
Uh, yeah, hold on.
We, did we ever really have Joe?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
We had Joe, we had. Then we had his phone showing up.
Listen, Joe's still here. He's just muted.
How does he unmute?
Like that, twice to unmute him. But he's not.
Well, and you can't call him because he's on his phone. So I can't know how to, I don't know how he's gonna vote. So.
Not necessarily on his phone, is he?
Yeah, he dialed then.
Oh, okay.
Just, just a
I'm unmuted.
Joe, you here?
Yes.
Okay, good. Do you have any questions?
No, I just have an observation. I live at the waste bill. I mean, you can see the, the faded you know, signs of, you know, advertising the waste bill when it was built and in that. I think the, the same thing with the Grants Building.
Yeah, well, a lot of buildings in Kingston.
Yeah. And I, I, I see no problem with that. It's nicely framed by that insect. And
Hey, thanks, Joe. Stay, stay with us there. And Eric, we just have a nudge Joe with green phone. So let's just keep the green phone there. Now, Paul, I have a question for you. You've heard the board's concerns. You don't know how they're gonna vote until they actually vote. There's a motion and then a vote. Do you want me to proceed with this variance as presented? Or do you want to kind of put this on hold for next meeting and you've heard the comments and come back with something? I leave that up to you.
Well, let me, um, let me just do a little, I'm not the best at math. So.
You know who's not here, Eric?
So.
Hold on a minute. You know who's not here, Eric?
Who, Tony?
Dan.
He's there.
Dan is here, Tony. He's on here by phone.
All right. I didn't know that. I don't see his marker up there. Okay, Paul, I've given.
Danny's here. My camera's off, my mute is on, but I am here. Listening to everything, Tony.
All right, I couldn't see you. So, so Paul, I mean, you've heard the comments from the board. You don't know how board members are gonna vote until they actually vote.
Sure.
Do you want to continue down this pathway with five, 312 square foot variance? Or do you want to look at some other options? I leave it up to you.
I'm, I'm gonna proceed. I'd, I'd like to say a couple, just a couple of minor comments that may put, put the reasoning that we did this into some context. As the code is written in the city of Kingston, the amount of square footage per building elevation is strictly linear. Okay, it's, it's left to right. It's the, it's the linear street frontage or parking lot frontage of the building. It doesn't have any
Can I stop you there? I don't mean to interrupt you, but we're not gonna rewrite the zoning code tonight. Okay, so what we're dealing with is what we're dealing with and it's linear feed and it's double and it's quite clear. So I really don't want to go.
Tony, I
No, I, I will let him finish. I'm just
Jesus.
cautioning him. We're not rewriting the zoning code.
I think he knows that.
Okay, good. But he doesn't know that until I say it. Okay, thank you though, Brian. Okay, Paul, go ahead.
All, all I'm saying is the code does not take into consideration the visual mass, the four stories. You could get the same amount of 100 square feet on a single story building versus a four story building. And that's why we chose to seek a variance for the amount of square footage because of the visual mass. Some of the other board members did comment that it looks well balanced. Strong, we feel, feel it's a strong statement for this building. This is the shortest elevation of the building. And we don't have any real signage other than a small sign that's already been approved on the rest of the building. This is the only signage. So that is all I have to say.
Oh, no, no. I want you to say something else. It was one other thing you have to say. I asked you, do you want to continue with the variance as presented? Or do you want to come back next meeting with a different plan or option or whatever you want to consider? That was my question to you.
If I get denied tonight, can I still reapply?
Yes. Yeah, you know, and you get into new applications and all that kind of stuff, right? Would he be charged for a new application? I want everything out on the open, Eric.
If the application is denied and he wishes to resubmit an application, generally speaking, there is another application fee. If the applicant, if he chooses to amend the application and to come back prior to a vote, there would not be another application fee.
That's what I thought, but there would be an application, reapplication fee if we vote negatively and he pre-submits. So Paul, I need some guidance because I do want to move on to the next item.
Please vote.
Please vote. Okay, good. Motion to approve an area variance for 77 Cornell Street from chapter 405 dash 36H parentheses four, for the purposes of a 512 square foot wall sign. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by name for me, please.
Donna Martin, aye.
Hey, Donald, yes. Okay. Mary?
Mary Newbauer, yes.
Okay. So we got two yeses. Joe, yes.
Okay, yes, yes, please.
Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, we got four yeses and I'm a yes. So are you a poker player, Paul there?
Only three cards at a time.
Okay, well, you got a five zero approval of your area variance. Okay?
I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Have a nice evening.
Good luck.
Thank you. Bye, Paul. Bye bye.
Okay. We have a motion. I, I failed to ask who did the motion on that? Who moved it?
I'm with it. I'm okay.
Who seconded it? Somebody.
I'll second it.
Donna Martin seconded. Mary moved. Donna Martin seconded. Okay, moving right along. We have an owner applicant Satoro Baumann. Are you here?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Good. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Satoro, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, Satoro. Satoro owns a building on 249 Wall Street between Pearl and Main. And it's a currently a four family building. And he wants to convert it into a five family building with the upper floor converted to another apartment. He currently has three spaces rented and room in the driveway for two cars. Is that correct?
Yes.
So that's five spots there off street parking. However, by moving to a fifth apartment, he's giving up his grandfather pre-existing non-conforming. So he needs approval for additional parking spaces. So currently he has two two-bedroom apartments which require four car, four off-street parking, two one-bedroom apartments, which requires three off-street parking, which is seven. And then a new apartment, it's approved. One two-bedroom apartment, which is two spots. So four, three and two is nine. He has five spots that he uses from rental and driveway. And then that's out to four vehicles on street. Now, you're, you're aware that if we grant the variance for four cars, it's contingent on planning board site approval. You know, you need to go to planning board for site approval for a five family in that zone. Yes?
Yes, Eric, I've mentioned that, yes.
Okay, so any variance we do grant will be contingent on the planning board site approval. Now, I just have to make one comment about the four vehicles on the street. If we do grant this variance, basically what we're granting If we do grant this variance, basically what we're granting is to place four cars in metered parking spots, because all of those two sides of the street in that particular area have meters on it, correct?
Yes, correct.
So whoever is in your apartments and is home during the day will be putting quarters into the meters, is that correct?
Yes.
So we're granting basically a variance, for metered parking.
Yes.
I mean, if at night, if they're parked, they'll go to work and come back, and at night, then you don't have metered parking, but I just want everything clear, that's, that's what those people will be doing, whoever they are, unless they wanna park further down the street, which I think is non-metered further down on, um, on Wall Street. But I know in, um, Main Street too, it's not metered. Um, the one section that you, if you took a left at the corner there. Okay, so we're looking at a variance for four vehicles. We're not looking at, at the necessarily changing the str-, the residence into a five-family because it is allowed in an O two zone of five-family residents, but it needs some very strict planning board approval, uh, with some strict measurements. I looked at it today. And, um, distance between the buildings and a whole host of other things, so. All right, did I explain the, the variance request adequately, sir?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. All right, uh, questions from the board, please? Just, then, speak, you just mentioned your name and I'll call upon you. Anyone who wants to ask.
I have some questions, as usual.
That's all right, Brian, I.
Get the, uh, ball rolling. So, a couple of things, um, if I understand this application correctly, you're talking about, um, a third floor?
Yes.
Apartment?
Yeah, up in the attic, isn't, it's like an attic up there?
Yes, um, I think that when this was built, this house was built in eighteen ninety. Uh, at some point, they did a renovation on the third floor, and it was, uh, living space. It was, uh, I was, what I was told, it was bedrooms uh, for the residents at the time. Um, right now, I, I don't know when the conversion happened, but right now it's just an empty space. Um, um, just.
Is there a bathroom up there?
We are planning on putting in bathroom, yes.
There's no bathroom up there?
As of now, we have a, a building permit to, uh, to put the bathroom and kitchen on the third floor. Um, as a addition, not as, uh, its own apartment.
Go ahead, Brian.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
You know, just one, couple things.
Sure.
Um, when this, if this goes from four to five families, you do, you are aware that it becomes a commercial property, right?
Yes, um, uh, it would be on, well, currently, I, 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 under a city tax bracket, we pay a four-family, uh, apartment is non-homestead.
Correct.
And we pay higher tax rate. Um, three would have been better because it would be a homestead. But, so, um, our, uh, primary income, me and my wife, and we have a two-year-old, uh, is the income from this property. And to be able to add, uh, a fifth unit, uh, would, uh, uh, would help us financially. Also to offset the extra tax, uh, rate that we pay for the, uh, non-homestead.
Ryan, I just said, just clarification on your question. So he's already paying non-homestead. Would he pay even additional non-homestead to make it a five?
I wasn't, I wasn't aware that, I, I wasn't aware that the city of Kingston, uh, uh, that the city of Kingston was considering four units, non-homestead, but I guess they do.
They do. That's correct.
There is no. Taxing.
That's not gonna change. The other, the other thing that will change, though, if you put living space on a third story, and Eric knows this as well, is that you're gonna be looking at either some sort of fire suppression system or a fire escape.
Yeah, so he's already been in talks and building inspectors already been up there and instructed him on what he needs to do to complete that.
Okay, so we're, we're really not, um, uh, uh, good questions, but, uh, we're really focusing on the impact of four vehicles on the street.
Yeah, I know exactly what we're focusing on. I just, I just wanted to, uh, I just wanted him to, you know, I just wanted to bring up those points, just if he hadn't.
No, it's, it's fine. I was just summarizing that we're gonna be talking about four more vehicles on a street that, uh, is metered. And when there's church activity in the, in the neighborhood, that those spots are taken up quite readily and quite, um, quite regularly and readily, uh, when there's any activity in the church, funeral, wedding, et cetera. Um, so, you know.
I do have a question about the parking. Um, so, the, um, the current parking spaces that you have, are they first come first served or are they assigned?
A current parking space that I rent or, uh, the?
Both.
All of them.
All of them is as assigned. Um, we actually just started, up until this September, uh, we never rented a parking space in the back. That was, you know, my neighbor's, uh, parking lot. Uh, but since when I had that idea to do the third floor, um, I thought it would be a good idea to start, uh, having a parking space for the, the tenants. Um, they are not assigned, it's just three spots. Um, well, assigned, meaning, uh, the, the owner of the parking space have a, a sign up for the property, uh, address?
No, I guess what I mean by assigned is it, is, is that if they're available, does anybody in the building that has an apartment in the building, can they park there, or are they assigned? And that the person who's renting a particular unit knows they have that spot?
Yes, one.
One, who parks in the driveway? Is that you?
I park in the driveway.
Alright, so that obviously is assigned to you.
That is assigned to you.
And now who else parks there? Because I saw one car in there, I, I thought it was a little tight to put two cars in that driveway, quite frankly, um.
Yeah.
Who is the other person who parks in that driveway? And is it a small car? Must be a beetle or something.
We, we only have one vehicle, so we only park one, and at one point, we had two cars and we were able to park regular.
Really? It looks small. Alright, so the driveway is not assigned, but I think Brian's question is.
Well, it is assigned to kids.
Yeah, well, yeah. Well, it's good to be, good to be king, but, um, now, uh, the, uh, where you rent, are they assigned, is Brian's question, or?
Uh, yes, there are, I, uh, one parking spot per unit, uh, uh, we offer.
Okay, so that, so that's, so, so that's, and, and I'm assuming they're assigned, so this fifth unit, are they, are they the ones that are just going to have to fend for themselves on the street? Um, you know, they're, you're gonna tell the people who are renting this fifth apartment that there is no off-street parking and that they'll be parking on the street? Is that essentially the plan?
Eh, essentially, because we never had a parking lot option before until this year.
Okay.
What people have done. I, actually, just to give you a backstory, uh, matters, I moved into this, uh, apartment, uh, as a tenant in two thousand and six. And I've been living here for, uh, well, since two thousand and six, and one thing led to the other, we end up, uh, doing a seller financing with our landlord, so we bought the building from our landlord five years ago. Uh, but this whole time, uh, this, uh, property never had a parking space except for the driveway.
Where do the people park?
Uh, people usually park in front of the house. Um, also, the Wall Street in front of our house was not metered when I first moved here.
Right.
Changed.
Okay.
Um, and even after, uh, after being metered, uh, people would just park in front of the house. Uh, usually people work nine to five.
Alright, if I, if I could just bring this to a point.
Yes.
If you had not requested a fifth apartment from the planning board.
Yes.
You would have had the need for seven spaces and five of which you're renting are in the driveway, so you really had two on-street parking kind of as a gift.
Already.
There's already, and it's being by virtue of it being pre-existing non-conforming. So you opened up the barn door when you wanna go to the fifth. Now, all of a sudden, you're looking at four, the two that you already had, and the two for the new apartment. So the question before us, board, is, do we feel that street can withstand another four cars that have the right to park from that building, and they're gonna be parking from that building, because they're gonna come home, or they're gonna be home, and they're gonna need this place to park? Two people already have figured out they can park on the street and pay quarters, I'm assuming. But, as a board, we have to consider the four additional cars that are gonna be on that street and have a right to be on that street and have a right to put quarters in the meter, which is.
They already have that right. The question is, is do we wanna give them the variance?
No, no, not all four have them. Two of them have it, Brian, that's my point.
No, but I mean, I'm just simply saying that it's public parking, you pay for the meters, uh, I get it. We're, we're giving them, we're giving them a variance to allocate parking onto the street.
Exactly.
But, you know, it's, so, it's, you know, I, I gotta be honest with you, it's an incredibly congested area, um, very busy, getting busier all the time. And in, it's, you know, the pressure on parking up there is only gonna get worse, um, not better, so.
Well, yeah, I know.
One, I, I would like to maybe add to, uh, that, I don't know if, if you've seen the map that I, I, I drafted.
Yeah, I saw it, yeah.
This, at any given time, during the day, weekends, uh, this is a kind of a unique, uh, location where most of the building on this street, either a charter across the street, uh, or offices, and not residential building, except for full-time residential building is ours, and anytime if you, if you come drive on this particular block now, it, I, I haven't seen outside, but it's, it's been always empty since I moved here.
It's not empty during the day and when there's church activities. I beg to. Satoro.
Right. Well, no, particularly Sunday, yes. Even with the during the day, it's just.
Even with funerals, weddings, et cetera. It's a busy, that's a busy area. I, I disagree, and I disagree with your pictures because I, I didn't see a photo of, um, you know, morning, weekday morning and weekday afternoon.
Yes.
Uh, and I would bet if you had, took a picture of weekday morning and weekday afternoon, there would be cars parked.
I, I'm, I'm pretty sure I included those.
I don't think you had.
I have a comment to make, yes.
Yeah, who said, Ari? Ari?
Yep, so I mean, you, yes, yeah, so just to point out, um, you're, you know, you're at an area, um, that is right in the middle of the Stockade District, which is probably the most, you know, if someone was gonna move to Kingston and was not going to have a car, they would probably choose to live there. And I tell you this because not everybody who lives in Kingston has cars. Not everybody owns a car here. As a matter of fact, I, I, I mean, I live on Fair Street. I have neighbors who, a, a couple, that they, they live here most of the time and they don't have cars. Uh, I was talking to a gentleman earlier who lives on Delaware Avenue who doesn't have a car. There's people that don't have cars, and you, you know, I, I.
I get your point. I get your point, but I mean, seriously, you know, the, the bottom line is ninety-nine point nine percent of people have cars, um, that, that live in these, in, live in these areas.
But I mean, you know, there, there is something to be said for like letting the market figure itself out. It's obviously an inconvenience for someone to have a car and live at this, uh, and live in this, this area, and then.
But Ari, Satoro's already told us that in the four apartments that he currently is renting out, including the one he lives in.
Yeah.
Everybody has a car, correct, Satoro?
So, I need to add to that.
Like, I'd like you to answer my question.
Yes.
Everyone that's currently living in your building, including you and your wife, have a car.
So, currently, uh, we have, uh, are not having our long-term renters. Uh, we have, uh, been doing short-term rentals, and so, uh,
Okay.
Every time it's different, but most of the time the people, uh, come visit and stay here, it's a, it's only one cars at a time. Usually a couple that comes up to stay. Uh, we made this choice of, uh, uh, converting into like a short-term rental when we, uh, purchased the building five years ago, hopefully to generate more income to support our family. And, uh, that's what we've been doing, so we don't have a long-term renters. We have, uh, as of now, uh, things might change, uh, short-term renters. Um, and usually ninety-nine percent of the time, they only come with one cars, like you have mentioned. A lot of people would come up with the bus from the city, um, so.
Or we, we as a zoning board.
Yes.
Have a calculation to make. That's a requirement that we must do based on the number of apartments. So we have to calculate it and then base a decision on what we're going to allow, uh, whether people have cars or not, and I agree with you, uh, Ari, more and more people don't have cars. I, I found that out when I sat on the second, um, zoning revision committee and the people that were on it were younger people, and they take the bus down to New York City to work and, and they ride the train, et cetera. But we as a board have to calculate what the impact of a potential, uh, until the code gets revised, and we have to calculate the potential. Joe, would I, did I hear you wanting to get on?
No, no.
What?
No, I'm fine.
You're okay? Alright.
Fine.
Hang in there, buddy. Um, Mary, do you have any question?
I don't have any questions, but I agree that that can get very congested. Not just on Sundays with church or funerals or weddings, but once things start to open back up and they do the street fair, the Saturday, uh, what is it, the farmer's market?
Yeah, but that's not, that, that's in the county lot.
Right now it is. I don't know if it's.
People have to get there.
Right.
Not gonna stay in the county lot.
Right, it's, it's probably gonna open back, but when it opens up, it'll be back from Wall Street there, that corner of Main and Wall, and going all the way down to North Front Street, so that's gonna take up a lot of parking spots for that situation also. And any other, um, activities that the city plans for uptown. I mean, I've lived in this town since the day I was born, and I have to kind of disagree with people not having cars. This was never a walkable city for me growing up. Oh, look at Ari, he's adorable. Oh, my God!
Wow, Ari, that's unbelievable.
Screen. How do you get him on?
This is Reese.
What are you feeding that guy?
Tell me about it.
Alright, alright, just so you know, you don't get any special dispensation just.
Ari, he can't vote, you know, I'm just.
I know, I know.
Yeah, I just wanna interject here.
And let me jump in for a minute there before, um, you know, the discussion gets much further. Um, I have some concerns about what the gentleman just said about, um, using the apartments that are currently there for, uh, short-term rentals. And, and absent some clarification with regard to that issue, um, I would ask that the matter be put over for, uh, for next month without a vote. Um, that changes the equation significantly, as I'm sure most of you are aware, the city is in the process of um, reviewing and potentially addressing legislation regarding short-term rentals. Um, there are issues with regard to, um, registration with the county and occupancy taxes and rules that are currently in place with regard to short-term rentals that are definitely relevant and probably controlling as to whether or not, um, you even have the authority to grant the request that's in front of you.
Well, hey, Dan, I wasn't gonna say it, but I was hoping you were gonna say it because the antenna went up when the short-term rental is a issue right now that's hot on the burner, so. I think I'm gonna have to table this, um, and I need someone to move to table.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to table under those circum-, I was, I was going to actually raise that, uh, raise that point, being that we are considering legislation. Um, I, I just wanna make, I just wanna make one point about parking in uptown in general. You know, and this is just a, this is just a general statement. I think the city of Kingston is seriously kidding itself. I think the city of Kingston is seriously kidding itself about the the need, the the long-term need for off-street parking and for parking infrastructure in Uptown. Uh, regardless of what else is gonna get built up there, there's a serious shortage of parking in Uptown. And um, you know, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say it.
Hey, Brian, it always has been and it's getting worse, no doubt. Always has been. And Mary, I I lived longer in Kingston. I think you probably only lived, you were born probably around nineteen eighty or so.
I wish, I wish.
All right, motion by Brian table. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, pass five zero. So Satoro, um, what happened to Satoro?
I'm here.
You kind of, you 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 know the proverbial can of worms?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm not too familiar with with that.
What that means? Okay, well, you you go, you go. It's the proverbial opening the can of worms when you mention short-term rentals.
Yeah.
Um, so there has to be some more consideration on this. I was just gonna say um my opinion on it. It's already been tabled that I didn't get a chance to express my opinion. I hate, you know, ultimately, the planning board is gonna make a decision on making this a five family through their site plan development um review. And um, I I was just having trouble voting no on the parking and basically stopping the project in its tracks because of parking. You know, I'd like to be able to see you go through, even though I do believe it's a well congested area and very congested and it's, but I hate, I would have hated to see this stop its track because we didn't give approval for four part, four cars when we basically do that um quite often. But anyways, Satoro, this is gonna be further review. I suspect you're gonna hear from um either Eric or Steve Knox, maybe even Dan Gartenstein regarding the short-term rental situation. Okay, so at this point, it's tabled. And Mr. Kitchen will get back to you as to the status of it. All right?
By the way, Satoro, thank you for bringing that up because it was very helpful for us to understand that and appreciate.
I didn't want it to hide anything or this is what I'm doing, so I don't want.
It's better not to hide because it then it opens up two cans of worms.
Right.
All right, all right, thank you.
Okay, so as far as the.
It's on, it's on hold. It's tabled. You're gonna hear from Mr. Knox, Mr. Kitchen, maybe Mr. Gartenstein. I don't know who's gonna be notified, but need further clarification. Okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for your time.
All right, the last one, we have um uh one Florence Street and uh somewhere hidden up here in these squares is Scott Dutton I saw a little while ago. Um, I believe he's.
Dave Mack.
There he is. Oh, look at that office. Nice office, Scott.
Thank you. Kind of money these guys make.
But.
Well, he's an architect if he doesn't have a nice office.
Well, he has a beautiful office. So what we have here is a pretty clear-cut um variance to prove, the proven area variance, locking, a lot of requirements, dirty feet, which is required um down to um fifteen feet, three inches. So um not a significant deduction. What's the uh with doing adding, putting an addition on the house at one Florence Street, Zone R one? Um, what's the dimension of the addition? I thought I saw twenty-four by twenty-four feet, eleven inches. Is that accurate?
Uh, it sounds about right.
Okay.
No, we uh, we got twenty-four feet wide by thirty-eight feet long and that's following the uh, the rear line of the house.
Where I got twenty-four feet, eleven. So it's thirty-eight feet. It's twenty-four by thirty-eight. Okay.
Also want to add that uh that Michael and Kimberly Decker are on here to answer any questions if necessary.
Okay, well, I think it's a pretty clear-cut case of um or there was some correspondence on this um through the board and um I think it's a pretty clear-cut case of just the reduction from the thirty, which is actually isn't even thirty. It's pre-existing, not forming. It's less than thirty.
Correct.
Still is a, it still is a variance from the thirty down to half feet, three inches. And it's a basically a traditional addition to a house, correct?
Um, correct. Single-family house, not changing the character of the neighborhood.
The only thing I'd comment on when I went down to take a look at the house, I hate to get trapped down the end of that street. I don't know where you turn to to get back on facing the other way. That's a lot of traffic going into the, into the the driveway. But um, any, does anyone have any questions of Scott or um uh, Matt, Michael or Kimberly Deck?
I had one question. What's in back of the house? Where where the addition ends? What's behind it? Where's that extra fifteen feet? What is it looking at? What's, is it just someone else's backyard? Is there another building there?
It's the neighbor's backyard. It's actually a stockade fence um on their, on their line. So there's, there's not much there.
Okay.
Well, they have a stockade fence back there. Okay. All right, any other questions from any other board members? If not, uh.
No, thank you.
Okay, if not, I have uh a need for a motion to approve an area variance for one Florence Street for the required area or for the required rear yard setback of thirty feet, reduced to fifteen feet, three inches for purposes of a twenty-four by thirty-eight addition.
So moved.
Brian?
I'll second.
Mary? All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, Scott, we get busy now and moving the plans up.
All right, thank you all. Appreciate your time, guys.
Good luck. Take care. All right, board, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn at um six fifty-five? Joe, are you gonna get in on this or what?
Yes.
Oh, Joe moved to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Donna?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor to adjourn at uh six fifty-six P M?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, Carrie, thank you, board. I really appreciate this uh full board strength. We do have an agenda item that we are gonna be having in the future uh that Dan will elaborate further on at some point, but we are gonna require a full five-member board order for the issue to be discussed and voted on. So let's try to do it next month. We have five people here.
Okay.
Which is gonna be a requirement for the consideration of um of the item. More to be, more to be said, it's time. Thank you, everybody.
Welcome, Donna. Say welcome before.
Yeah, that's a pleasure.
Now, I gotta ask Donna a question. Everybody, everybody could go off if they want. I want to ask Donna.
Yeah, hi.
Like somebody told me, whether it was Eric or what, you were from town of.
Yes, I lived in the town of Shangam uh back in the late eighty eighties.